And welcome to the October 18th, 2022, meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify yourself for the record now by standing and stating your name and whether you are a Pittsburgh resident. At this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed in silent mode. And for the record, there was no one recording. Counselor Cruz, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
In the presence of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here, remote.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hasinger.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Boeschman.
Here.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Cragan.
Here.
We have a full team, 11 members.
Thank you very much. The public had been advised to contact the clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None have been brought to our attention and no one registered for the remote participation. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to participate in public comment, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and city of residence, and identify the item on the agenda on which you wish to speak, and you may speak on that item for not more than two minutes. Seeing none, report of the Appointments Committee, Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We were, we took up a reappointment of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority Board of Directors, term to expire September 2nd, 2027. Dave Basilio, it was unanimously accepted.
Move to approve the report?
On the motion.
On the motion, Counselor Roche.
I just wanted to point out that Mr. Basilio used to be a Clegg-on resident, and that's why the city's doing so good. My word.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I have a motion and second to approve the report of the committee. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. The records appear to be in order.
Move the records report be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report of the Committee on Records. There being no objection, it is approved. We have, from His Honor, the Mayor, three reappointment letters for the Human Rights Commission, HAFSA-ASFA, term to expire October 1st, 2025, Jamie Darkangelo, term to expire September 1st, 2025, and Krista Ford Rhodes, term to expire May 1st, 2025. Those all stand referred to appointments. Report of the Economic Development Committee, Counselor Van Hasinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 11th, 2022, the Economic Development Committee met to hear one petition, 25422, to approve a tax increment exemption agreement for 759-769 Main Street pursuant to the City of Pittsburgh's Housing Development Incentive Program, Market Rate Housing District. We discussed this program, which is to provide incentives to help make up the difference to promote the development of market rate housing downtown, and the committee unanimously recommended approval of this agreement. Move the Committee, Economic Development Committee report be accepted.
Second.
On the motion.
Motion, second. On the motion, Counselor Roche.
Mr. President, maybe you can answer this question for me, maybe you can't. I watched it on TV, I understand, for five years. My question is, if the guy packs up, he finishes all the apartments and he decides to turn around and sell the property, does the, does the exacerbate still go into effect for five years, no matter who owns it?
Counselor, was that discussed at your committee meeting? I don't actually have the answer for that off the top of my head.
So, don't have a definitive answer, because the agreement is with the developer of the property. So, I do not necessarily know if that is the case or not the case. But typically, in these types of projects, there is a holding period where the owner would hold it for a bit before selling, if that was their goal, too. But, I can't answer it, I'm sorry.
And, Mr. President, a while back, during, before the summer, I read in the local newspaper that this young man get already tax credits before when he started, and then he's got more tax credit, and now the city's going to give him more tax credits? He get it two times already, and now we're going to give him more?
Well, this is not a tax credit, but...
It's a TIF. It's a TIF. What do you call that?
A tax increment exemption.
Right. For five years.
But...
I'm not in favor of it.
I do not know his tax history. That is not something that was, you know...
Well, Mr. President, since the planning board's here, can they answer my questions? They're right there.
If they have that information and would like to share it, they are welcome to do so. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, Counselor. No, there is a motion on the table. It can be rescinded, but that is... Counselor Gina Tally, your motion, I believe?
No.
No.
I want, I had to make a comment, if I could.
Oh, Counselor, are you set?
I'm set for now. I'll listen to my fellow counsel talk.
All right, Counselor Gina Tally.
The tax increment financing, I believe, because of the agreement, it's with the developer, so it would stay with the developer. From my recollection of many TIFs that we've done over the many years, I think that we shouldn't not pass this because of some hypothetical, that we have no idea if that's the case or not. I mean, you can make that hypothetical for any TIF agreement that we give. The whole purpose of the tax increment financing agreement is to incentivize the development of vacant properties in downtown, or properties in general that develop commercial growth for the city, or in this case, residential growth. The developers did receive a $315,000 Mass Works grant several months ago, and in addition to that grant that they received, and the HDIP program that they're under as well, we're also doing a TIF for five years. I just don't believe this council should not accept the committee's report and the agreement based on a hypothetical. And, you know, these are private investors from outside the city that have already started to do work there, so I have never, I've never seen an instance where, with regard to a TIF agreement, the developer backs out. If the property is sold by them, I would, I would think that the TIF is still in place because it's specific to the property. It's not specific to who the, who the beneficiary is, because the whole point of that TIF going through is so that the property can get developed. But, don't quote me on that, but I've made my point. I don't think we should hold this up based on hypotheticals. And the fact that this, these gentlemen got tax financing, tax increment financing, and grants from the state, well, that, you apply, you get it. I mean, that's, we have a lot of projects that are, that are spearheaded by, by state incentives, and some that aren't. So, it's just the lay of the land, and it's tax dollars we all pay to the state that comes back to us in these forms. So, I look at it as a vacant property on Main Street that is now going to be developed into a tax-producing location, and that's how I feel about it. I'm never, I never shy away from giving a tax increment financing agreement, especially when it involves a property that's vacant and sitting there rotting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I sit on the Economic Development Committee, and I was at that meeting, and I think the estimate that we're, we're giving this particular person amounts to about $2,700. It's not a huge amount of money, and he's going to provide housing for four two-bedroom units at that location when he's done. I think it's a, it's a win-win situation for the city.
Thank you. I yield the floor. I agree with Counselor Gina Tally fully.
Counselor Van Hasinger.
Just to raise the question that was raised, or to answer the question that was raised in regards to if the property was sold, it doesn't really matter, because the city's goal is to support development on Main Street. This is a, a project that we've highlighted and wanted to support, and if it gets developed, then they get the, the tax increment exemption. That's the carrot that we can give to help support it. And if they sell it, well, they, they sell it. If the tie is still in place, it's still in place. If it's not, it's not. I mean, what difference does this do it make? What we want is an improved property that has people living on Main Street, that has a greater appearance and benefit to the downtown area. That's, and a key point with these types of projects in this program is that the property taxes currently paid on the property don't go down. We just delay increasing the taxes after the project is completed. That's, that's all it is. We're not giving away money, we're just waiting to accept more money in property taxes.
Thank you. Counselor Squallia.
Thank you. Couple of clarifications. It's about $2,700 a year for five years, so a total of $13,764 over five years. And to Counselor Boeschman's question, the sponsor is Prime Real Estate Investment, and according to our information, Section 6D, "The sponsor shall not assign any interest in this agreement and shall not transfer any interest in the same without the prior written consent of the municipality." So, the city would have to approve a transfer of this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent sleuthing. I will just remark that I think we all, we need to understand that in a city like Pittsburgh with as many old buildings as we have, and coming out of an economic depression of the last decade, we're going to have a lot of properties that are not economically feasible for a private developer to work on without some incentive or assistance. So, our options amount to provide an incentive or assistance to make it feasible for them, or let the property sit until the economy shifts sufficiently for someone to take it, which could be five, 10, 20, 30. So, when we're talking as short money as we're talking here, 13,000-ish, in, you know, to me, 13,000 is a lot of money, but to the city, to the city budget, $13,000 is, you know, office supplies. It's, that's not a huge amount of money for the city, and if it creates a taxable property going forward and a livable space to draw people downtown, I think in the long run, the city will benefit. All of the city, not just the developers, not just Main Street. So, I am in favor. Counselor Roche, second time.
The only reason why I say that, I want to know if we're going to give TIFs to people for downtown, and I know people that want to develop property up in Clegg-on, on the west side, on the east side, on the south side. Are we going to give them TIFs when they develop a three-family and gut it and make it new? Are there going to be TIFs for them? Or is this TIF just going to be for one location only?
I can't speak to the mayor's policy on that, but I can say that it would seem to me that it would depend on what the projected benefit to the city overall is of redeveloping those particular locations. Counselor Van Hasinger.
Just to answer the Counselor's question, this, it's actually a tax increment exemption, a tie, it's not a TIF, it's a different animal. It's pursuant to the Housing Development Incentive Program, HDIP. And that is a program only available to gateway cities, but we have to define a zone where that program takes place, and that is basically the downtown area. So, not to say that this will never happen elsewhere in the city, but through this specific program, this is only in the downtown area, in the defined HDIP zone.
Thank you. Counselor Gina Tally, did you have something else to add? Okay. If all have been heard...
Move to approve Petition 25422.
We actually have the motion, thank you, Counselor.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
In opposition? One in opposition. Motion passes, 10 to 1. Next up, we have the report of the Finance Committee, Counselor Gina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met last Wednesday, October 12th, for two items. 25122 was adopted by the committee. This was for $87,000 transfer from our other municipal purposes reserve account in the budget to the Police Department for vehicle replacements. One vehicle was brand-new purchased, it was an ATV for off-terrain usage. The police do not have such a vehicle, and with the rail trail and other avenues of the city that they've had calls in the past on, it's been very difficult for them to access those areas without that vehicle. So, this vehicle will supplement their fleet that they've never had before. And, I had a note here on the second one.
He held it?
Yeah, the second item, 250-22. We actually held that in committee because Chief Suarez was unable to make the meeting for when we had the discussion, we had some questions, so, but with him here now at my request, and I've already spoken to you about it, I'd appreciate if we could pull this out of committee, that since it was held, and take it up tonight, because he is here today, and it wasn't his fault that he couldn't make it last Wednesday.
I would be perfectly in favor of that. I'm just going to ask you to hold on just a moment for the formalities, Chief.
We make a motion to accept 251-22?
Second.
Motion and second to accept 251-22. If there is no objection, is approved unanimously. Can I entertain a motion to pull 25022 from committee?
So moved.
So.
All right. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it is for the council. Chief?
Thank you, Counselor. And I thank you all for your time. So, I'm here tonight to respectfully request the funding to purchase three support vehicles for the fire department. Two of these vehicles, we're replacing two of our vehicles that are currently in our fleet. One is a 2005 Chevy Tahoe. It's 18 years old with 82,000 miles, does have some steering issues, some body rust. The second is a 2013 Ford Escape, which is 10 years old, 92,000 miles, does have some electrical issues, but its small size also isn't conducive to the needs for fire prevention with all their equipment they need during their fire inspections. The other vehicle is a new vehicle, it's a support arson squad during their investigations. Right now, they don't currently have a dedicated vehicle. When our investigators respond to an investigation, they shoot down a central, they hope to find a spare vehicle, or they'll have to use their own vehicle to load it up with their own personal equipment, such as hand tools, their personal protective equipment, shovels, rakes, axes, lighting, step ladder, things like that. We've investigated over 30 fires this year already, so this, some of these investigations, too, are also multi-day investigations. So, this vehicle will get quite a bit of use. And, on, speaking on, using the vehicle, their own vehicle, their own personal vehicle, it is completely unsafe. This is due to the carcinogens and the contaminants that are picked up by the tools in their gear during their investigation, which in turn cross-contaminates their own personal vehicle or their daily vehicle, and that just makes it a completely unhealthy environment. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Counselor Green.
My only concern on that is, what, what do you do now in the fleet vehicles where many people are in and out of each of those vehicles to keep them from becoming contaminated? I mean, do you ozone the vehicles? What do you do to try to eliminate that in the vehicles that are already in place?
Well, we try to limit the, the gear from going into it. So, in the back of our trucks, a lot of our support vehicles, we have a cabinet, that's where we put in our PPE. When we get back to the station, we have gear extractors, the gear is washed, dried, and then put back in nice and clean. When we use our own personal vehicles or daily vehicles, when we have to put extra tools in, there's no place for it. So, they go in the backseat, they go in the front seat, and that's when all the cloth, the interior gets contaminated. That's what we're trying to avoid. With this new arson vehicle, it's an actual pickup truck with a cab, all that stuff will be stored in the back outside of the cab where the drivers and the other investigators are in.
So, it would be two SUVs and a pickup truck with a cab?
Correct.
And a cab? A cab and a cab? And a cab?
There'll be a cap on the pack, on the, on the bed of the truck.
Thank you.
Counselor Roche.
Are you trading the other cars in?
We're trading two of the vehicles in, because the third one's a new vehicle, so...
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Motion to approve 250-22.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and second. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it is approved.
Thank you all, thank you very much. Thank you.
We have, I've got a request for suspension of the rules on 25722, authorizing the city clerk to notify the voters of the state election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. If there is no objection, it is for the council.
Move to approve 25722.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 25722. Seeing no objection, it is approved. We have an ordinance in final reading, 19922, to amend Chapter 169-24, entitled Parking Prohibited at All Times, relating to Boulder Drive as in the enclosed order with amendment stated 92922.
Move to approve 19922 and send through its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised?
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
And, on the motion, Counselor Van Hasinger.
The reference to the amendment stated 922...
Separate.
Is it separate?
That's separate, yep.
All right.
And I will note that you, did you send an email saying there weren't, there were some amendments that weren't tracked, or...
We, when this was in, during the reading on October 4th, I believe, there were some amendments that were approved to the parking restrictions.
And you sent those out to the...
Yes, I did send those out.
So, this will be including those amendments, Counselor?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right. I have a motion and second to pass 19922 through its final reading, to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised as amended. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hasinger.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boeschman.
Yep.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cragan.
Yes.
11, all in favor.
Thank you very much. I am now going to recuse myself. There is a zoning matter that I've been consistently recusing myself from. Vice President Van Hasinger will run the public hearing on that.
So, this evening, we have a public hearing on Petition 10622, City Councilor Andy Van Hasinger, on behalf of Almussa Basme, trustee, owner of 339 River Street, to amend the zoning ordinance, Section 181.643 of the city code, to include the following uses: marijuana courier and marijuana delivery operator, and to allow the same in commercial district as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. And I would like to invite Mr. Silverman to come forward and to introduce the, the petition and the ordinance change and explain what it's all about.
Sure. Thank you. Philip Silverman from the law firm of Vicente Sederberg, I'm here for the petitioner. So, what we are seeking is to enact some new zoning that would allow two new types of marijuana businesses in the city's commercial zoning district. They're called a delivery courier marijuana business and a delivery operator. A delivery courier is kind of like FedEx. They go to a retailer, there's an order that comes in from a consumer, the courier goes to a retailer, picks up the order, takes it to the consumer, gets paid, et cetera. Again, like, sort of like the FedEx model. A delivery operator is different in the sense that, that the delivery operator goes and buys wholesale marijuana from a producer, warehouses it in a vault, and then they take their own orders from consumers and takes them from their vault and goes and deliver those. So, this was a, these were new types of licenses that were created, and the idea here was, and I'll get into this a little bit later, but the idea was that only a, a social equity applicant or an economic empowerment applicant is entitled to seek these types of licenses for a three-year period. And the reason for that was, there's always supposed to have been, in the cannabis industry, some, some ability to sort of right the wrongs of the war on drugs, and they wanted to, they were hoping that they would get, you know, a significant number of people who had been harmed by the war on drugs to be a part of this industry. Well, it really wasn't happening when the industry first started to roll out with retail stores and, and cultivators and product manufacturers. They just weren't getting those types of businesses up and running for a variety of reasons. So, the idea was, in this particular type of license, when it was later created, they would have the ability exclusively to do this type of a business for a three-year period. So, the problem that we had here, which, which I faced with a client who was sort of looking to want, open one of these businesses, is that these types of licenses were created by the Cannabis Control Commission after the time that you enacted your zoning. So, the zoning didn't really, you didn't know anything about this, and didn't really have the ability to sort of think, where do we want these, where does it go? And it created a great deal of confusion. So, for example, in our case, we wanted to put this particular business in, in the commercial district, and so we went to the building commissioner to try to get a determination as to whether this was the right zone for this business. And the building commissioner said, yeah, it is the right zone, because effectively, this is a retail business, and retail marijuana businesses are allowed in the commercial zone. Really, a pretty reasonable interpretation, in my view. The problem was, later, I got a message from the same individual saying, as much as it is in that zone, we can't let you go forward, because the city has a limit on the number of retail licenses. You can only have eight retail licenses in Pittsburgh, and we're at that limit. So, effectively, anybody that was looking to do one of these types of businesses in the commercial zone was shut out. There's no way to do it. And, so, I tried to explain, and I spoke to the city solicitor about this, that the Cannabis Control Commission kind of knew this was coming down the pike, because they, what they were seeing is that people trying to do this were going into towns and they were facing the same exact comment. Yeah, we think it's, it's retail, but we're at our limit. And so, all, everything that the CCC was trying to do to give these people a break, to let them come in and operate these businesses, it wasn't going anywhere, because there were no open slots for any more retail. So, what the Cannabis Control Commission did was, they issued some guidance, and they passed new regulations that basically said, do not consider these types of businesses to be retail businesses. Okay? It's a different license, don't do that. And so, we were in sort of a, a conflict here. We had state law saying it's not a retail, we have local zoning saying it is a retail, and so we were stuck. I tried to suggest, well, maybe because it's state law, and maybe that, that supersedes local law, so maybe you can ignore the eight license limit. I think the city solicitor wisely said, well, if you're looking for clarity, that's not the way to provide it. Maybe what you should do is go and file a citizen's position, petition, and try to put new zoning in to clarify that this can in fact go in as a separate type of license, not a retail, as a delivery business in the commercial zone. And so, that's what we did. We've, we've provided you with language that would allow delivery operators and delivery couriers in the commercial zone. I will say to you, you, you may want to actually expand that and, and put these in some of the other zones that you have marijuana retail businesses as well. I couldn't do that, because my client is in the commercial zone, all I can do is ask that it be put in my client's own. I don't have the ability to say that it should go into those others. That one's up to you, it doesn't really matter to me, but from your perspective, you may decide, yeah, let's put it where all of the other marijuana businesses are. In any event, what I wanted to do was explain to you why I think this is, is a good thing for Pittsburgh. Right now, there is revenue in this industry that you are not capturing in the city. If somebody in Pittsburgh wants a delivery of marijuana, there is no business in Pittsburgh that can do that. They would have to go and find a delivery business that is hosted by a city or town outside of Pittsburgh. And so, when that sale occurs, you don't receive any revenue from that. There's a 3% sales tax on marijuana sales, you don't get that. The community that hosts it, that hosts that delivery company does. You don't host one, you don't get that 3%. So, this would allow you to do that. Whatever sales this company makes, whether they're in Pittsburgh, or Lemonster, or wherever else, you'll get that 3% sales tax from the sale, because you are the host community. Also, I would suggest to you that there is a market for this beyond Pittsburgh that you're not getting. Unless people from surrounding communities come in and go to the retail at, at Pittsburgh, you don't get their revenue when they're looking to purchase. Well, with a delivery business, they can purchase to one of the surrounding, excuse me, deliver to one of the surrounding communities, you get that revenue, too. So, it's both deliveries in Pittsburgh and outside of Pittsburgh, you're going to get the 3%. I should also mention, in... I should also mention, in this particular circumstance, the law recently changed, again, regarding these types of businesses. And what they did is they wanted to further incentivize cities and towns to open up to companies that were operated by economic empowerment applicants and social equity applicants. And so what they said is, if you host one of these communities, not only do you get that 3% on the retail, you get an extra 1% as well. So effectively, you'll be getting 4% of the revenues from a delivery company that would operate, in this case, as I said, in the commercial zone. So that's really sort of a summary of what we're trying to accomplish, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, before we have counsel questions and comments, I just do want to clarify that this is not to this petition and ordinance does not approve any specific development.
It does not.
This is merely to change the rules to allow any development that meets these criteria.
And I believe what would happen is this would be we would have to go and get a special permit, as with any other marijuana business.
All right, thank you. All right, Counselor Green?
My question is, if you're already operating a retail business at 339, and right, because that's where this business is located, right, 339 River Street?
Yeah, but there's no retail business there right now.
Isn't this the Healing Garden?
Not a retail marijuana business, no.
I will just to my the point I just made, that this is not to approve any specific development. This is to change the rules to allow any qualified development to apply for a special permit for this use. So we're not evaluating the prospects of a specific development in a specific location.
So then do
Yes.
Should then this not be amended further, that we remove this the particular owner or trustee and the address?
No, because they initially put forward the petition, and it was submitted on their behalf by me.
Well, isn't that then to their benefit?
Well, it's any petition that meets the submission requirements can be submitted by a resident or business owner in Fitchburg. So they're not submitting a petition to allow this use at this specific location. They submitted a petition to allow this use in any qualified district in the city.
The only reason the address and the owner are mentioned is because you have to demonstrate that you are able to file a citizen's petition. And the way you do that is by showing that you are a business within the particular district that you're seeking to change the zoning for.
So no matter what retail business we already have in place in Fitchburg, these would be additional licenses or additional regulations to those businesses who want to apply for this, for either the courier or the delivery?
Yes, this is a separate additional license.
So rather than having just eight, which was our maximum, we could end up with 16?
Well
If every if every facility had the ability to opt to do courier or delivery from their already existing retail space?
Well, it's not really related to whether you have a retail. Again, just so my client does not have a retail marijuana business at that address. I think you might be getting confused with one that's nearby.
So 339 River Street is Johnny's Service Station?
Yes.
Healing Garden is right next door?
Correct.
Two separate entities?
Correct.
So would Johnny's Service Station address be buying from the vault at the Healing Garden or shopping around at whatever facility we have that has the best deal or the best brand or however that works?
Whatever facility finds the best deal.
So ultimately, are we looking to expand eight into whatever whatever number that turns out to be by making the ordinance change, that they then in fact can, because it would be a separate business, correct, other than the eight that we've agreed to that can operate here in town? The this ordinance change would then increase that number of how many businesses we have?
Yes, so the cap in the city applies to marijuana retailers. Is the determination of the Cannabis Control Commission that these are not marijuana retailers? These are outside that cap. So if we wanted to institute a cap, we would have to look at what opportunities are legally available to do so.
I yield the floor.
Counselor Deanna Tally?
Yeah, I don't see these as retailers either because there's no customers going to the facility.
Right.
They are ordering on the internet.
Correct.
So that is probably the justification by the CCC why you wouldn't count them as a retailer retailer because like a liquor store, people are not going to the store, going in and looking around. It's just they're getting an order online from whomever they're buying from. And if this is a courier, you said, they're just going to go pick it up at the location and then send it to the person who ordered it? Or if it's a if it's a operator, they will warehouse it at their location and then just ship it out? No one's going there to pick it up or pay for it there, correct?
Correct.
So you mentioned, sir, about the 3% sales tax. That would come to the city if this, let's say it's an operator, they would warehouse and buy the product from anywhere in the state, but the fact that they're going to deliver it from here, we get the 3%?
Correct.
What about if it's a courier? Let's say someone buys something, let's say in Lemonster, and they drive over to their store, pick it up and deliver it. We don't get that 3%, right? So does it only apply to operators and not and not couriers?
It's operators.
Okay.
The couriers only make it's a relatively small fee, you know, a delivery fee. They don't they're not actually getting paid for the product itself. So, yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clarification, that the 3% sales tax for the city's benefit would only be if it were an operator. If it's a courier, yeah, of course, we'll get something because they'll buy it from a place in Fitchburg. But if it's outside of Fitchburg, we wouldn't. But in an operator, we would get it every time?
Correct.
Okay. And so I think the reason why I'm not concerned about this from a cap perspective is from that central point of this is not a place where people are going there, parking, and then there's issues with regards to the security aspect and whatnot. I mean, I don't see that as a concern like it was when we were discussing the cap limit with respect to actually physical customers going into this building and buying the product. This is just warehousing it. I see it no differently, and I would assume the planning board, when they do a special permit, they would treat the conditions of these locations, not a courier, but a certainly an operator, where they're going to be storing this product. I would assume that there's going to be security conditions that we would place on, let's say, a manufacturer, where they're holding on to this product. So that would be through the special permit process for an operator. Courier, to me, it's just they just have a truck, and they just go and pick it up and then pass it on, like you said, FedEx. Operator, I think, would have more restrictions or more caveats or stipulations. So since we don't have a cap on manufacturing, I kind of see this similar to that with respect to the warehousing. And I don't want to forego that that sales tax opportunity, and I would have some reservations if there were retail involved, but I understand the logic behind why there isn't. So I would not be opposed to allowing this usage. Thank you.
Counselor Skolja?
Thank you. Just to clarify, the information on where it says that a this marijuana delivery operator is not a retail establishment is in 935 CMR 500.05011, which is marijuana delivery operator, and under subsection C, it says, a delivery operator is not considered to be a marijuana retailer. And then it defines where it where that is. So, but I have a couple questions. So it's for delivery operators, couriers is only allowed for social equity applicants? From from three years of the first license, is that the first license in the state of Massachusetts, or is that in the city of Fitchburg?
No, in the state of Massachusetts. So there's probably there was a delivery company, I think, that started about a year ago, so I think there's two years left. It's conceivable they will extend that. I wouldn't be shocked, they've extended it once already. It's just been so difficult for these types of operators to get things up and moving, largely for the reasons you might imagine. You know, I'm coming before you because you don't have zoning in place. A lot of places didn't have zoning in place. So they felt the need to sort of extend this to give them more opportunity to get a head start before they let the rest of the industry into this particular type of business.
Thank you. And I can't find the notation, but I feel like I read that municipality can't ban delivery operator from functioning in the city. Is that is that is that they can't they have to allow them to come into the city, but we don't necessarily have to allow them to be housed in the city? Is that one of those?
Well, if you wanted to ban delivery within the city, you would actually have to have a town citywide vote to do that, which hasn't occurred. Other than that, I think, you know, it's a legal business, and so I think there has to be some way to for it to function within the city, you know, presumably through some kind of zoning.
Okay, thank you. And now, speaking of the difficulty in getting these businesses going, is it still the case that delivery operators have to wear body cameras, and there has to be two delivery operators per vehicle at all deliveries?
Yeah, it's right now, that's what the regulations read, is that there have to be two agents in every vehicle. There is some move afoot to move that down to one agent because it's proven very difficult to make a financial go of it when you have to pay two people for every delivery. I don't know, you know, I think there's good reason, again, because of the body cameras and the amount of security that's associated with this. I suspect that it will eventually be moved down to one agent, but it hasn't happened yet.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm fully in support of this.
Counselor Craigin?
Thank you. I just did a little bit of fast research on this, thinking, golly, can we get like liquor and alcohol delivered in Massachusetts? Why, yes, we can. So it doesn't seem fair not to have the cannabis delivery also be part of that. Also, just in New England alone, Vermont allows delivery of medical. Massachusetts allows medical recreational. Maine allowed medical, just as started to allow recreational. New Hampshire does not allow delivery of either recreational or medical. So in Connecticut, you can actually have your own dispensary facilities can use their own employees to deliver cannabis. So it sounds like it's a little more lenient than here. So just for a little background there, I found that helpful. I'm my our family business was at the River Street facility, which is the giant factory there, and so I I see that as a hub of growth, and I was happy to see this. I appreciate the information that we're receiving, the fact that there's an additional 1% that comes just because of the commercial zoning. Could you just say say that language again about why is there an additional 1% atop the 3%?
Again, to incentivize cities and towns to allow social equity and economic empowerment applicant-owned businesses within their borders. They just passed in the most recent law a provision that states that any any host community that allows such applicants to operate a business gets an additional 1% of tax revenue.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor.
Do any other counselors have questions? Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I'm still I just would like a little more clarity on the delivery operator. Now, they're going to be, you know, customers are going to be ordering online. Now, the state is saying they're not retail established. Does it matter whether you order online or if you go into the store to buy? I mean, you're still you're still selling retail. You're buying wholesale and you're selling retail.
It's, yeah, how you define the only reason they've decided to not define it as a retail is because they didn't want them subject to the caps that every town has put in the number of retailers. Every town and city, when the initial legalization law passed, if you may remember, the legalization law said that the town could restrict the number to 20% of the number of alcohol licenses within the town. Okay? Everybody did that, almost everybody did that. They all set the limit in their town at 20% of the number.
We did four.
So you did eight, which I suspect was 20% of the number.
Forty percent.
And everybody else did, and therefore, if you consider these retailers, all of those spots have been filled up across the state. You've got your eight, the next town over has its four. Everybody reached their limit. And so this whole idea of, let's help the social equity applicants, let's help the economic empowerment applicants, oops, they're shot out if we consider them retailers. So the only reason they don't call them retailers is because they don't want them subject to these limits within the towns.
I think Counselor Green was getting at is that, you know, you're you've issued these licenses to these eight businesses. Now, they suddenly they've got they've got all this competition that they originally didn't think they were going to have.
I suspect that, first of all, you'll see them work with these delivery companies because it will be to their advantage to do that. And as I said, a lot of these, right now, if somebody in Fitchburg wants a delivery, they can't get it from any of these eight. They basically have to go to a delivery company outside of Fitchburg because Fitchburg doesn't have a delivery company. So one way or another, I think it helps Fitchburg. Will there be some increased competition to your retailers? Yeah, I think there'll be a little bit, but I suspect they're also going to work with these delivery companies because they want their product going to Fitchburg residents.
But they can, I think you said at your previous your previous appearance, that these these people, these delivery operators, they can buy anywhere in the state?
They can.
And so is there any way, has any of the cities and towns, have they restricted the sale to just the establishments they already have?
I haven't seen that. I don't I don't know that they want to do. I think they'd rather try to get the revenue from surrounding towns. So I haven't seen that.
I yield the floor. Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. I know this is my second time speaking. You mentioned that because Fitchburg doesn't have the ordinance in place, who in our surrounding community does already have marijuana delivery operators in place?
I don't know. I have not looked at that issue.
So Lemonster may have it, but we don't know that?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if Lemonster has it or not. I if I had to guess, probably not yet. But it's, you know, everybody, some places do their their zoning a little bit different. It's possible that there's some sort of a catch-all that allows it. I just don't know.
And how how quickly in the process, if we if we approve this, what is your next step? And then how how quickly could we allow this to happen if we do approve it? How quickly, I mean, are you looking by the end of the year, after the first of the year, mid summer?
Yeah, it would never happen that quickly. I hope my client isn't listening to me. They hate hearing that. But but the reality, in any type of a licensing situation with marijuana in Massachusetts, 12 months is about the minimum that you could ever get one of these open.
Wow.
It's you have to go through the state licensing. You can do that concurrently with the local permitting process, but it's going to take four or five months. Then you've got to go and ask the Cannabis Control Commission for review of your architectural plans. That'll take you about 30 days. Construction's probably another three months, and then there's another two or three months of inspections after that. So 12 months is really the minimum.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Counselor Boeserman?
One quick question. You say, if I open up a business, I'm going to have a vote there. So what's to prevent you from coming to my place and said, hey, I know you got a you got a pot back there, and I'd like to buy some right now on the spot? Can I do that? Because you say no, but I know places where we're not supposed to be selling, and they were selling it before.
So all I can tell you is that you're probably aware of the number of cameras that are around these facilities. Every every room where marijuana is handled or stored in a marijuana facility has to have a camera. So if you tried that, you run the risk that the CCC is going to come as they do random inspections, and they're going to figure that out. There's tracking of all of the inventory as well. So somebody's going to see, you know, that something happened to some marijuana. What happened to it? Either it's hidden and you can't figure out what's going to happen to it. That's a good way to lose your license to operate one of these things. Or they're going to see that it went to somebody not at a home address somewhere, another way to lose your license. It's, you know, one of the positive things about an industry that has such a high cost to get involved is that these operators actually do run them pretty responsibly in terms of making sure that people under 21 don't get the product. There's hundreds of thousand dollars that go into just getting a license. It's not worth it to sell to somebody that walks in your door so you can make 15 bucks on a transaction when that's at stake. So we haven't seen a lot of that type of thing in Massachusetts.
All right. I yield the floor. Any further comments or questions from the council?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think I'd be in favor of the delivery courier, but not so much the operator, because as Counselor Green alluded to earlier, I mean, we could be opening up a lot more than we bargained for originally when we granted eight licenses. We could have, you know, a slew of businesses engaged in that.
Listen, I think the market is the best arbiter of that. I would tell you, you know, it's I would tell you, you know, it's, it's a, the operator, excuse me, the courier business is not a very lucrative business. You know, the delivery fee, it's, it's, think about what you would pay FedEx to do a delivery. It's not a lot of money. So the operator license was very important to the Cannabis Control Commission in trying to give these applicants this type of a break. I, I hear you that, you know, there will come a point where there's saturation of these types of businesses. I get that. What I, I think the reason why you did these limits, you know, was more because you were concerned about how are we going to monitor what's going on at all of these places? And that's a real concern with a retail, when you have customers coming in, leaving, coming in, leaving. It's really not so much of a concern here where it's basically, most of these businesses are going to have one van, maybe two delivery vans, something like that. And they go out once or twice a day at random times. It's just not the same type of impact of people coming and going in a retail. And I think that's the bigger reason why people wanted to limit the number of retailers.
I think I would echo the market's effect on the number of facilities we would have or operators that would have because, as you mentioned previously in another issue, that it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to just get licensed, let alone setting up the facilities for this. So if you can't guarantee that you have a sufficient market to support that business, no operator would make that investment. It's, it's a self-limiting situation.
I think that's the case.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yeah, the, when we had the numerous public hearings about retail licensure, the concerns were mostly community oriented in terms of residential impact and stuff like that. Because of the parking, customer usage, people coming in and out, the parking, proximities, this is nothing like that. This is simply a storage area that they will be shipping out of. And I think that's why we shouldn't compare the two. And I believe that's why the CCC relaxed the rules or regulations because it is completely different to have scores of people go to a location every day with the traffic, with the, the security concerns versus warehousing it and delivering it out, whether it's in the city or outside the city. And it was said earlier, this is coming here whether we want it to or not. We might as well get in on it because if we don't, then other communities around us will have distribution areas and they will get the tax revenue and we won't. It's not like if we don't do this, no one else will. It's, we might as well capitalize on what the market is demanding and open up the competition to allow for this so we can get some benefit from it. And I actually am less concerned about warehouse distribution than I am about the retail because of all the factors that we had to consider when we were discussing the licensures on the cap for eight. You know, this is nothing like that. And I don't want to see neighboring cities and towns open these types of locations up and then our retailers are selling to them and we don't, they're, they're getting the benefit and we're not. I don't, you know, I just, I don't see the concern correlation between warehousing this stuff and retail. There wasn't really a concern with the manufacturing piece. I mean, manufacturing, you're, you're making this stuff there, you're storing it. I would consider this more in line with a manufacturer in terms of storage and security, but all the other concerns that went into a retail discussion don't apply here. And so that's why I'm supporting this and that's why I, my opinion is those concerns are unwarranted. Thank you.
Counselor Schultz, you do have two opportunities to speak, but we are gathering information here. If you have a question, that would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, I just was, you know, you made the comment about saturation. I mean, and also the fact that we, you know, we have existing businesses, we try to, you know, you know, keep the existing businesses going. We want to, we want to promote new businesses, but we want to, we want to keep our existing businesses in, in operation as well. So I think, you know, your point about saturation and what point is, is going to be saturation with these, with these businesses.
Listen, I, like every other industry, there will be that point. I would, what the counselor mentioned though, if you don't do this, somebody's going to go and set one of these up next door because there's a market here for this. And so all that's going to happen, you're not, you know, people are going to deliver to Pittsburgh, but Pittsburgh isn't going to get any of that money for the sales tax. So, you know.
I guess what I'm getting at is do we, do we have some type of limit on it or is it, should we just wait and see what happens?
I guess all I would say to you is, I think I'm the only person that's ever come before you looking to do one of these businesses and get it started. So I don't know, you know, that there's tons of people that are going to come here to do this type of a delivery business, but I think there is a market here. It's been very popular in the eastern part of the state. We haven't seen as much out here. There are some companies doing it though. I think, you know, this is an opportunity to have a local company do it and generate revenue for the city.
Any further comments or questions? All right, I will ask if it's a question, great, because you have the two opportunities to speak, but save comments for deliberations.
I'll wait because it's not a question, it's a comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on. We do have the opportunity for public comment. If anybody in the audience wishes to speak in favor of the petition, you are welcome to come to the center podium or lectern and just please state your name and address for the record.
John Westlake, 714 Ashby State Road, Pittsburgh. I'm a social equity applicant, born and raised in Pittsburgh. There's some great points that are not being brought up, as in the shut-ins, the disabled veterans, the elderly that can't get to dispensaries or have the means. A lot of people may think that this cannabis is going to be delivered to college students and housing authorities. That's exempt. We can't do business there. Being a social equity applicant myself, it enhances the business around, around us. There's no competition because it, it's a market segment that these companies are not reaching at the time. The, the shut-ins, the elderly, the, the veterans and people that normally don't have the ability to get to dispensaries to buy. Delivery courier works with licensed marijuana agencies in the area to help deliver cannabis from possibly some of the cultivation units to the dispensaries going into Boston where they do business. Delivery operator space allows us to buy wholesale, repackage brand and distribute out to clients all around Worcester County. So I believe the 4% that you're going to be getting in revenue is going to be greater because we're going to be servicing probably 20 different communities that are surrounding Pittsburgh to bring in additional revenue that just dispensaries wouldn't be able to draw in. So it's actually going to help the industry than hinder it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to speak in favor of the petition? All right, now we have the opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition to come forward. All right, seeing none. Now that all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
To approve petition 10622.
The matter is now before the council.
Second.
You have a motion on second. On the motion. Counselor Green.
I just want, so that I heard you, I want to make sure that I heard you properly, is that as a marijuana delivery operator, you would go to the facilities, buy wholesale, and then you yourself or the industry would...
Rebrand and repackage, so we're not really affecting the brand.
I am sorry, we are in council deliberations. We're not allowed to ask questions of...
After the meeting, if you have any more questions.
That's right. So there, in the definitions that have been put forward in the petition, there are two kinds. There is the courier who just brings it from a retail facility to a customer. And there's the delivery operator who would have their own supply that then they would deliver to customers. Those are, those are the two differences.
Okay, can I still make a comment?
Absolutely.
That I, I would never want the public or the, this community to think that I would sell out their health or their overall well-being for 3% or 4% of a sales tax that, that we would get. So will there ever be an opportunity, if we, if we pass this, if we make the zoning ordinance changes to allow this to happen, will it ever come before this body again for deliberation on moving forward or limits or saturation or it's working, it's not working?
So the applicants to operate these businesses would have to go through the special permit process that's heard by the planning board. So there is a hearing process that way. We have the opportunity to make further amendments to the zoning ordinance, just like this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So if there is, this is not set in stone, our zoning ordinance does change from time to time, and we do have the ability to put forward petitions to make changes to the zoning ordinance, which we have gone through a lot in the last few years. So there will be opportunities to put, put forward changes if something is not working. We can look and see what's not working, what needs to change in the zoning ordinance, and a counselor or assistant can put forward a petition to change the zoning ordinance accordingly and we come back to this body.
I would fully support that. And I would like to just mention that if, if we do this, it sounds like we will, that we, then maybe then we become the gold standard on how every other community goes forward to make it so it's not maybe a year process or that it's not so arduous in the process. So thank you.
I will say, so I was on the planning board during the time we instituted our marijuana ordinance and I went through a lot. I'm very familiar with Mrs. Silverman. I've seen him on a few applications here or there. But Pittsburgh was a bit of a leader in the Commonwealth in terms of being receptive to work with this, this type of business. And we, we heard that a lot of prospective applicants who come in, that we took the time, we figured it out, we instituted ordinance, we had a planning department that would work with these applicants and let them know what they need to do. And it's, we weren't the cheapest community by any means that we heard, but we were reliable to work with because the people knew what to expect, that we understood how things worked. And we were friendly enough to, to not necessarily welcome with open arms, but to, this wasn't allowed use in the Commonwealth, to, to make sure that it's a, a business-friendly environment in terms of application and process. So I think here we do have the opportunity to be another bit of a leader in the, in the Commonwealth and in this industry because this is something that is available statewide, but as Mrs. Silverman said, not, it's, not many communities have adopted it yet. A lot of people take the wait and see aspect. We have the opportunity to capitalize a bit, to get these businesses, as he mentioned, not just to serve Pittsburgh, but to serve surrounding areas and other parts of the Commonwealth. Any other comments on the motion?
I'll just make one aside. We're still calling it marijuana and I think I made, made that point some time ago. I don't understand why we call it marijuana when we have a Cannabis Control Commission and it's still called marijuana. It should be called cannabis.
And I, you're not wrong. I think when this started, it was marijuana, and then there was a shift to cannabis at some point down the line and it hasn't quite made it all the way through. But existing right now, it is in our ordinance as marijuana, so we should be consistent with that in terms of wording. This does require a roll call vote, so Madam Clerk, would you call?
Absolutely. Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
No.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Ian Hasinga.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucha.
Yes.
Counselor Cregan.
Yes.
So we have nine yes, one no.
The matter passes. And now the hearing is closed. Thank you. President Zerl?
We have two further petitions. 25822, Counselors Sam Squallia and Bernie Schultz on behalf of Janet Rivera to remedy the sidewalk area in front of 367 Water Street. That is referred to Public Works. And Counselor Sam Squallia suggested amendments to the Main Street Boulder Drive layout. That will be referred to Public Safety, but I believe Counselor Squallia had an amendment she wanted to raise.
Yes, I amended that slightly. There were a couple typos and the new amendment was sent to the city clerk and she printed it for everyone. Also, I think this petition should be sent to Public Works as well as Public Safety.
We'll deal with that in a moment. First, do I have a formal motion on that amendment?
Yes. Yes, make the motion to, as amended.
Second. All right, I have a motion on second to amend as detailed in the communication from Counselor Squallia. If there is no objection, all right, the petition has been amended and currently stands referred to Public Safety. I believe Counselor Squallia wants it also referred to Public Works. If there is no objection, I'm inclined to do that. All right, it will be referred to jointly to Public Works and Public Safety. That concludes our agenda. We do have three announcements this evening. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place on Thursday, October 20th, 2022, from 4:00 until 5:30 PM in Room 203 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. The president of the Pittsburgh Historical Society invites you to our third Pittsburgh Trivia Night, Saturday, November 5th, at 6:00 PM at the Pittsburgh Historical Society, 781 Main Street. The theme for this event is Turkey Day. We will focus our history questions on the longstanding football rivalry between Pittsburgh and Lemonster throughout the years. A pasta dinner is included for the $25 cover charge and tickets can be purchased on the website. And the city clerk would like to remind all voters that in-person early voting for the November 8th state election will commence this Saturday, October 22nd, and every day through Friday, November 4th, here at the Legislative Building. Please go to the city clerk's webpage under in-person early voting for the hours. And the last day to register to vote for the November 8th election is Saturday, October 29th at City Hall.
Wow.
That concludes our business for this evening.
Move to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion on second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned.